Anybody as we got our technical difficulties handled by our technology department. I'd like to call to order tonight's regular Board of Education meeting here at 5:48 PM on Wednesday, March 17th, 2021, here in the auditorium and conducted remotely or virtually. Tammy, can we have a roll call, please?
Dr. Ashford.
Here.
Ron Liberty.
Here.
Sandra Otten.
Here.
Jeremy Rattler.
John Smith.
Here.
Maria Wolfing. Um, Maria, although she came here. I just got to know her.
Okay. Maria is on virtual.
I think we're gonna have to check. Maria Wolfing. Here. Black Flower.
Here.
Spencer Greenlight.
Here.
Captain Blake.
Here.
He is joining in and standing and facing the flag for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is your honor that you stand as one nation, under God, with this love and righteousness.
For the evening, welcome to the Merrill A&amp;D Public Schools Board of Education meeting. MAPS respects the role our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students a safe learning environment and the highest levels of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sample. Next on our agenda would be our public comment section. I do not receive virtually or in person any public comment sheets. Thanks for board recognition this evening. So at this time, we will move to board recognition. It is Anthony Gerlock, Merrill Physical Therapy, 25 years of dedicated service to student athletes First recognition for the board this evening is Officer Mark Kekendor for his years of service as the SRO or Student Resource Officer in the Merrill School District and service in Merrill A&amp;D Public Schools. Did not see Anthony and don't think he was able to attend tonight. to the Merrill community as a whole. Mark, if you're here, if you could come up. Let's have a round of applause for Anthony Gerlock and Merrill Physical Therapy. Next recognition from the board this evening is for the Merrill High School custodial staff. Insist of Bill Waite, Steve Holtz, Kurt Tombez, Kevin Kier, Steve Saul, Jim Suley, Don White, and Eric Bokey for their time, flexibility, and efforts in facilities set up, sanitation before and during and after practices, rehearsals, and events so that our students, coaches, directors, and advisors can compete and participate safely in activities this school year. Were any of our custodial staff able to make it this evening? A lot of them are busy doing just what they're being recognized for, so thank you to all of them. If we could have a round of applause. Next of all, we'd like to recognize Ginger Gomis for coordinating and facilitating the deployment of all hotspots, not just this evening, but to ensure students and staff were able to successfully learn virtually. She also successfully managed the craziness of student enrollment, making sure each student and staff member had a working iPad in a timely manner. Thank you to Ginger for your organization and hard work.
Thank you, Ginger.
Next this evening, the board would like to recognize Michael Lynn. We'd like to recognize Michael for successfully navigating all the new technology requests that have transpired due to COVID on top of his normal duties. Michael is an extremely high-functioning individual who always provides service with a smile. He's always willing to help and function at the highest level of integrity. Thank you to Michael for his willingness to learn new things and lead by example.
Thanks again.
Next, but certainly not least, the board would like to recognize this evening Merrill Varsity Bowlers coached by Scott Smith. We have Aaron Hartz, who's a 12th grader, Kyle Summeling in 12th grade, Piper Plauts, 12th grade, Paige Plauts, Oak Junior, Dylan Smith, and Brandon Humphrey, who are freshmen for finishing third at the state tournament, which was held marks fifth through the seventh. They bowled a 15-game qualifying round and knocked down 2,827 pins, averaging almost 189 pins per game, which put them as the third highest-scoring team there. They were only 65 pins away from being high scorers for Division II. You couldn't be broader if all the kids handled themselves under all the pressure. Team of the weekend, if someone had a bad frame, they would focus on making it up instead of getting down. They covered for each other all day. They never covered themselves up and would keep pushing to the final frame to get as many pins as they could. Piper Plauts ended in 33rd place out of 55 top girl bowlers in the state with a three-game series of 538, missing the qualifying cut by only 48 pins. Dylan Smith finished in 51st place out of 100 top boys bowlers in the state. He had a three-game series of 565 and missed the cut by a mere 38 pins. They bowled on difficult oil patterns all weekend and showed they have what it takes to compete at a high level with the top kids from around the state. Congratulations to the coach and any members of the varsity bowling team to come up here for a photograph and to receive your recognition. I would appreciate that. This time, I would invite our student board of education representative, Levi Black, Emilius Scobera, to the microphone for our Board of Education student reports.
If you've been to the high school recently, you can see all the kids walking around with green bandanas or green tapes on their backpack. This is because Raise Your Voice, a student-led organization at the high school that works to end the stigma around mental health and provides support and resources for students. Trained 56 students, the advocates for change. They are identifiable at school by the bright green bandanas and backpack tapes that have local and national resources for mental health. Also, the ACT was last Tuesday, March 9, and the junior class had a very good turnout, especially since they were following a date with no school on Monday. If a student missed the makeup date, the makeup date is next week, and ACT retakes are to be determined. ACT results should be out in four to six weeks or close to the beginning or middle of April. Also, last week was the annual winter fest on Wednesday, the 10th. To keep everything COVID-safe, the activities were in the latter half of the day with two different sessions. This year, students also did not travel outside of the school except for going fishing at the dam. Most activities were in teachers' classrooms and included things like making homemade ice cream, playing Batman, and watching movies. Many students enjoyed these activities and were glad for a break from normal school.
So, Ron is planned for May 22nd this year, and it'll look a little bit different, but we're confident it can be accomplished. Lots of things have been taken into consideration. The school already has a couple of things lined up already, like a great big tent to be able to hold it outside, and it's planned to start around 6 o'clock. Graduation this year is also planned, luckily, and it's on Friday, May 28th. The school has multiple plans in place to make sure it does happen, and this could include indoors with limited seating or maybe being out in the stadium. As well as graduation, senior awards night is also planned a couple days beforehand, and it might work as a mixture of a virtual and in-person event, and everything is being done to make sure that the seniors have a good setup. And then, the musical this year has also been going very well so far. So, as well as the singers practicing really hard every day, the musical pit has been meeting multiple times a week to prepare, and they have all made a lot of progress. This will be a unique show that has been adapted to fit sort of our radio show, so people will have the choice to watch or listen. And what's best is that the show is going to be recorded, so lots of people are going to be able to watch it, even if not a lot of people are going to be able to attend and watch it in person. And if you look behind you, you can see they got the point set up, so it's going to be good.
Thank you, Emilius and Levi. Any board members have any questions for our student board reports this evening? Well done. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we will have the administrative reports. At this time, I'll turn the agenda over to Dr. Sample. Thank you, Kevin. Our first administrative report is from Linda Ojenski, Director of Curriculum Instruction Report. In her report, she has provided information as to how the ELA resource vetting process works. Linda is present, and may answer any questions board members may have. Our next report comes to us from the Director of Kindergarten School for Young Learners, Jill Seaman. She has attached her monthly report. If there's any questions for myself or Jill regarding her monthly report. Karen Baker provided the Director of Special Education People's Services report. Her report talks about the vaccination clinics and the updates. Those are no longer tentative dates. The vaccinations are scheduled for tomorrow, March 18th. I know Karen's been very busy assigning times for those who choose to get the vaccination. They are certainly not mandated, and she provides other information there as well in her report. So, the first vaccination is scheduled for tomorrow, and the next vaccination, part two, will be on April 8th. Are there any questions for Karen or myself with her report? Next report is from Brian Dasher. It's his monthly budget update. Brian could not be present tonight, but all of his information is available, and I will try to answer any questions you may have of Brian's monthly budget update. The food participation update is also attached. You can see the various data and the format that they use each month from Topper Food Service. Are there any questions I may answer for the food participation update monthly report? Eddie has provided his Director of Human Resources report. His topics this month cover things such as staff planning and panels updates, workers' compensation update, employee benefits group, and liquidated damages collection update for them. Are there any questions on any portion of Eddie's report? Okay. Kesha Mashick's report is next. Technology update includes digital book checkouts, iPad damages, digital learning day e-rates, the brainstorm, and getting to know the technology team, which has been a monthly feature of her report. Kesha is present. Do you have any questions for Kesha on her report? And finally, my superintendent's report, the outline of the monthly activities and meetings that I have attended. I've highlighted a couple of events from my meetings. With the board meeting orientation, I did have the opportunity to meet with Ron Liberty and Kevin Blake, and we have been able to compile some great ideas from both Ron and Kevin attending the state convention this year, State Education Convention, and so we are building a list as we go, as we think of things as well that are going to be pertinent for any board members. Tammy is adding those to our orientation list, so I greatly appreciate the input by Ron and Kevin for this. Also, the Court of Appeals decision came back regarding Maple Grove. They did reverse the, the Court of Appeals reversed the court's order to the extent that the court did conclude that the governance board did default with respect to enrollment. So, I'm pleased that the court's decision agreed with the district, that our contract with the Maple Grove Governance Board gave the district discretion to issue a default notice to the governance board based on the school's insufficient enrollment. And then, finally, last Friday, with respect to the detachment of Maple Grove to the Athens School District, Board President Kevin Blake and myself and Dale Bergman were able to, and Michael Lent were able to take an entourage of Athens School District personnel, approximately 12 people, on a tour of Maple Grove. The tour went well. We looked at the three parcels. We looked at the actual building and the contents of those things, and so rather than Athens asking questions about something that they hadn't seen, many of them were not familiar with, we were able to take a physical tour, lasted approximately an hour and a half last Friday. Last Friday was also very, it was not disruptive for our students because we did not have school, and so that was a good day to do that. Any questions regarding the Maple Grove tour or the Court of Appeals decision or the new board member orientation? I've also included the rounding I've been able to do. I've given you administrative evaluation progress report, my building visibility, the alt meeting agenda in notes, and as well as the central office administrator meeting attendants, and then finally, with the weekly bulletins for staff that go out each and every week. And that concludes my report. Right, any additional questions for Dr. Sample on the superintendent's report? Hearing none, we'll move down the agenda to our committee reports. The first committee on the agenda is the Finance Human Resources Committee. We had the draft minutes from the March 3rd meeting attached to our packet. John Smith, our chair, and additional representatives from the committee are available for questions. Any board members have questions for the Finance HR Committee this evening? Hearing none, next would be the Facilities Committee and the attached draft minutes also from the March 3rd committee meeting were attached to the packet this evening. Myself as chair and other members of our Facilities Committee are available to answer questions. Do we have any questions for the Facilities Committee and board members this evening? Hearing none, our next committee would be Policy Committee with the attached draft minutes from the March 4th committee meeting. Ron Liberty as chair and other members of the Policy Committee are available for any questions this evening from the board. Any board members have questions for our Policy Committee? Hearing none, we will move on to CTP or Curriculum Technology People's Services Committee. We have the draft minutes attached from the March 10th meeting. Maria Wolfing, Chair, is available virtually, and other members of the CTP committee are in attendance here tonight as well. Do we have any questions for our CTP committee members from the board this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on on the agenda. We have nothing under the title of unfinished business this evening, so we will move right on to the first item on our Board of Education business. That first item is the 2021 Summer School Academy Program Course Description Book, the topic summary sheet. It was authored by Alex Mashick and Brad Potter. We have a recommended motion from our CTP committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Nuts?
I make the motion to approve the schedules, course offerings, and registration materials for MAPS Summer School enrolled in Richmond, 2021.
Motion by Nuts, do we have a second? Second by Brett.
I'm second.
Second by Brett. We have a little lag, otherwise Maria would have got the second, that or Ron.
I'm hoping.
Any questions or discussion on that motion on this topic this evening? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the CISA 9, 2021, 2022 Shared Services Contract with an attached topic summary sheet from Dr. Sample and recommended motions from the Finance, HR, and CTP committees. Do we have a motion this evening? Brett?
Recommended motion to approve the CISA 9, 2021, 2022 Contracted Services Agreement as presented with a projected cost of $171,634.
We have a motion by Brett. Do we have a second? Second by Ron. Any discussion for questions on this topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the consideration of the No Work Day following the second MAPS Lincoln County Health Department Vaccination Clinic Day with an attached topic summary sheet from Karen Baker, was the recommendation of the CTP committee to share this with the entire board as it became available, and the appropriate motion to come to the board as a whole.
Kevin, may I speak to this?
Go ahead, Maria. You have the floor.
As Chair of the CTP Committee, I just wanted to address this. We had quite a robust discussion about this at CTP. The general thought, and I'll invite any CTP member to chime in to add to my thoughts, I don't want to speak for everybody, was that this idea probably would have been denied at CTP. However, there were CTP committee members that wanted the whole board to take a look at it, and the motion that's on the agenda right now is a little bit different than the motion we intended. It was a motion to consider, not approve, the idea of the No Work Day. So, I'd invite anybody else on CTP to chime in.
Go ahead.
It's not a motion that we approved at the CTP committee, however, looking at that, I don't know of any other way of doing this without leaving schools full of kids with no supervision. People get sick after the second shot more than the first. I just, I guess I would be in favor of going with the No Work Day. Now, after thinking about it, and I had some discussions with Karen also on it. Thank you.
Linda, Heather Andrews, you have the floor, Linda?
Yeah, I agree. The motion that's on here is not exactly how we put it to come to the board. We wanted the board to make the decision tonight because we are in the circumstances of not actually, I don't know if we're, we all are discussing this about it for our own opinions. Mine, preferably, is, you know, everybody's getting vaccinated. You don't know what the side effects are going to be. And in a different environment, in a different employer, people are going to be going to work after they get the vaccination, and it's going to affect anybody differently. You know, and so to me, I see it in a different point of view. It's, we're already missing school. We're already taking kids out of class for special days when they have an extra teaching preparation day. I think if possible, we should be going to school if we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Kendra?
Just to chime in as well, I also agree that the motion is not how we presented it. I would be in favor of not having an in-school day after the vaccination, so.
Karen, if you'd like to come up to the microphone before I ask for a motion, I would give you a quick moment to highlight your topic summary sheet.
Thank you. At this point, what I'd like to do is give you data as background. Can I get to the sheet? I spent last Wednesday and Thursday setting appointments for our staff. We received notification late on Wednesday night that we would receive all of the vaccine that we have requested through previous sign-up and inquiry from our staff, and the vaccine that we are receiving is the Pfizer vaccine, which is a two-dose vaccine. At this point-
Any questions regarding the Maple Grove Tour or the Court of the Bureau's Decision or the Board Member Orientation? I've also included the rounding I've been able to do. I've given you administrative evaluation progress report by building visibility, the alt meeting agenda and notes, and as well as the Central Office Administrator Meeting attendance, and then finally with the weekly bulletins for staff that go up each and every week. And that concludes my report. All right, any additional questions for Dr. Sample on the superintendent's report? Hearing none, we'll move down the agenda to our committee reports. The first committee on the agenda is the Finance Human Resources Committee. We had the draft minutes from the March 3rd meeting attached to our packet. John Smith, our chair, and additional representatives from the committee are available for questions. Any board members have questions for the Finance HR Committee this evening? Hearing none, MAPS would be the Facilities Committee and the attached draft minutes also from the March 3rd meeting were attached to the packet this evening. Myself as chair and other members of our Facilities Committee are available to answer questions. Do we have any questions for the Facilities Committees and Board Members this evening? Hearing none, our next committee would be Policy Committee with the attached draft minutes from the March 4th committee meeting. Ron Liberty as chair and other members of the Policy Committee are available for any questions this evening from the board. Any board members have questions for our Policy Committee? Hearing none, we will move on to CTP or Curriculum Technology People Services Committee. We have the draft minutes attached from the March 10th meeting. Maria Volpe, Chair is available virtually, and other members of the CTP Committee are in attendance here tonight as well. Do we have any questions for our CTP Committee members from the board this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on on the agenda. We have nothing under the title of unfinished business this evening, so we will move right on to the first item on our Board of Education business. That first item is the 2021 Summer School Academy Program Course Description Book, the topic summary sheet was authored by Alex Meschek and Brad Potter. We have a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Nubs?
I make a motion to approve the schedules, course offerings, and registration materials for MAPS Summer School enrolled in Richmond 2021.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second? Second by Brett. Second by Brett. We have a little lag, otherwise Maria would have got the second. That or Ron.
I'm hoping.
Any questions or discussion on that motion on this topic this evening? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the CISA 9 2021-2022 Shared Services Contract with an attached topic summary sheet from Dr. Sample and recommended motions from the Finance HR and CTP Committees. Do we have a motion this evening? Brett?
Recommend a motion to approve the CISA 9 2021-2022 Contracted Services Agreement as presented with a projected cost of $171,634.
We have a motion by Brett, do we have a second? Second by Ron. Any discussion for questions on this topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the consideration of the No Work Day following the second MAPS Lincoln County Health Department Vaccination Clinic Day with an attached topic summary sheet from Karen Baker was the recommendation of the CTP Committee to share this with the entire board as it became available and the appropriate motion to come across the board as a whole.
Kevin, may I speak to this?
Go ahead, Maria, you have the floor.
As Chair of the CTP Committee, I just wanted to address this. We had quite a robust discussion about this at CTP. The general thought, and I'll invite any CTP member to chime in to add to my thoughts, I don't want to speak for everybody, was that this idea probably would have been denied at CTP. However, there were CTP Committee members that wanted the whole board to take a look at it, and the motion that's on the agenda right now is a little bit different than the motion we intended. It was a motion to consider, not approve, the idea of the No Work Day. So I'd invite anybody else on CTP to chime in.
Go ahead. It's not a motion that we approved at the CTP Committee. However, looking at that, I don't know of any other way of doing this without leaving schools full of kids with no supervision. People get sick after the second shot more than the first. I guess I would be in favor of going with the No Work Day. Now, after thinking about it, I had some discussions with Karen also on it. Thank you.
Linda, Heather Andrews, you have the floor, Linda.
Yeah, I agree. The motion that's on here is not exactly how we put it to come to the board. We wanted the board to make the decision tonight because we are in the circumstances of not actually, I don't know if we're, we all are discussing this about it for their own opinions. Mine preferably is, you know, everybody's getting vaccinated, you don't know what the side effects are going to be. And in a different environment, in a different employer, people are going to be going to work after they get the vaccination, and it's going to affect anybody differently. You know, and so to me, I see it in a different point of view is we're already missing school, we're already taking kids out of class for special days when they have an extra teaching preparation day. I think if possible, we should be going to school if we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Kendra?
Just to chime in as well, I also agree that the motion is not how we presented it. I would be in favor of not having an all-day day after the vaccination, so.
Karen, if you'd like to come up to the microphone before I ask for a motion, I would give you a quick moment to highlight your topic summary sheet.
Thank you. At this point, what I'd like to do is give you data as background. Can I get to the sheet? I spent last Wednesday and Thursday setting appointments for our staff. We received notification late on Wednesday night that we would receive all of the vaccine that we have requested through previous sign-up and inquiry from our staff, and the vaccine that we are receiving is the Pfizer vaccine, which is a two-dose vaccine. At this point, starting tomorrow at 1:00 noon at 2:00, we are going to administer 235 vaccines to our staff. That staff includes our teaching staff, our support staff, our food service workers, and our custodians. The second dose will be for that same number of staff than on the people beat. The concern that is brought forward is if given a lot of the data that our staff has received and the possibility of illness is that we may have more staff call in unable to come to work than come to work. And also note that of these staff being vaccinated, they are also our full-time subs that we've had in the building for the past three months. It is most definitely your decision, but I feel that I would be negligent to not bring this concern to the board of whether we have enough people to be with our students that day or they talk to the county this week. Typically, the symptoms do start the following day the person who ordered to have them. So if anyone has any questions, I'm very proud that we have that many people. Granted, it is a personal decision. There are staff who have already been vaccinated, as myself. We have four staff members who have volunteered to work the clinic because without volunteers, we would never be able to hold the clinic on-site. And we also need to acknowledge that there are staff that it's their personal choice to not receive the vaccine due to medical reasons or their own feelings, which I and the staff and the administration support 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Nubs, it is in the next, you have the floor.
Did the committee consider virtual day?
No, we didn't. We didn't talk about that, Nubs, because if a teacher, I guess in my mind, if a teacher was sick, they're sick virtually as well, and they wouldn't be able to teach. At least, that's what went through my mind.
I didn't understand what you said. So the very phrase what Maria said, Nubs, was that they did not specifically talk about that because it was their thoughts in their mind that if you were unable to come in and you were sick, that you would not be able to virtually teach either, that that would be a hindrance to that performance? Ron, did you have your hand up? Ron?
One more thing is, I guess my concern is, all of a sudden at 7:00, the buses are already run, people, the parents have got their kids off, now we got no staff, now they're going to bunch them all together in one room such as this, taking away all the distancing that they've learned through the year and try to cover with a few staff members a lot of kids in all their schools. So that's my concern is the kids being in buildings without much supervision, much less being taught.
Thank you, Ron.
Can I, can I, one more point, Kevin?
Go ahead, Maria.
Just a bit, I am not a doctor by any means, but a little bit of research I did was that the rate of having an adverse side effect was below 5%. If anybody has better information than that, I would welcome that information, but even if we were at a 5% rate, that would shut the district down.
Thank you, Maria. Mr. Smith?
I have a lot more familiarity with Moderna than I do Pfizer vaccine, but the reactions that at least have been reported in person are pretty individualized, and so you might see the exact same thing happen at the same rates with the first doses with the second dose, and the, or not at all. And so, the proposal is based on like laws of medical probability and individualism, and even the disease state itself is reacting extremely individual, and we can't get our arms around the lies of it, so I don't know if I understand the logic behind it personally. And I think if you go back to the spirit of what's happened over the last year, we basically have for an entire year rolled with the punches, and, you know, the high school, and there's a lot of examples of the buildings that just stay home and deal with the cards that were handed to them. And I really think that's what's going to transpire after the first round and after the second round. It's going to be, is what it is scenario because I don't think anyone's really getting their arms around any level of predictability. So I have a hard time supporting something that far home with that much individual reaction.
All right, thank you, John. Any other board members have anything to add before I ask for a motion? So the other thing that I heard at the CTP Committee, just for clarification, is it was discussed by Thursday, and that was based on workload and the number of people with Lincoln County Health Departments, that they need to record everything within a certain amount of time, so by doing something late in the day Thursday, it would take a majority of their work day on a Friday, and it needs to be done within a certain number of hours. So all that was asked, it was answered, so I just want everyone to hear that answer that was unable to attend CTP. At this time, I would ask the board if they had a motion. I'll ask you a second time, do we have a motion on this topic? Third final call for a motion on this agenda item. Hearing none, we have no motion, thus no action. Moving on to the next agenda item is to the increased physical therapist services with the topic summary sheet attached from Karen Baker and our CTP Committee had a recommended motion. Do we have a motion on this agenda topic tonight? Ron?
I make a motion to approve the physical therapist services for MAPS, two, five days per week.
Motion from Ron? Second by Brett. We have any discussion or questions on this topic or motion this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. We have any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the switch refresh with a topic summary sheet attached from Kesha Meschick and a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Nubs?
I make a motion to approve the switch quote.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second? Second by John. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the uninterruptible power supplier UPS refresh with an attached topic summary sheet also by Kesha Meschick and a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Brett, go ahead.
Recommend a motion to approve the UPS purchase, or UPS vote from our FMM solutions.
Motion by Brett, do we have a second? Second by Maria. Any questions or discussion on this topic or motion this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the router refresh with an attached topic summary sheet from Kesha Meschick and a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Kendra?
Motion to approve the router quote.
Motion by Kendra, a second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the 2021-2022 Staff Handbook Review for First Read and Discussion. The attached topic summary sheet was from Eddie Lennan. There is no action at this time, it's a first read and discussion. Does anyone have any questions for Eddie or for Dr. Sample for that matter? All right. Hearing none, we will move to the next agenda item, which is the 2021-2022 MAPS Central Office Organizational Chart and the creation of three positions and elimination of two positions to align with the organizational chart proposed for 2021 and 2022. The attached topic summary sheet was provided by Dr. Sample with recommended motions. Do you follow? Would you like to start with an overview, Dr. Sample? Yeah, the organizational chart, the proposed organizational chart for next year is attached as well as the job descriptions for the Director of Business Services, which would be the, it's the proposed new position, as well as the Accounting Coordinator job description and Human Resources Coordinator job description. It not only, we only find the need to adjust to the planning enrollment with the elimination of two central office administrators' positions, but it also creates efficiencies when it comes to leadership and authority. Their organizational restructuring will result in an estimated $99,783 to be reallocated during the school year next year for '21 and '22. All right, call for a motion, or a series of motions. Anyone have any clarifying questions on this topic summary sheets? It was brought through the Finance HR Committee, this would be a good time for questions. Otherwise, I would ask if we have a motion this evening? John?
I'm going to make a motion, but I'm going to amend it a little bit based on what I think a proper order would be. Recommend a motion to align the proposed 2021-2022 organizational chart to approve the elimination of the position of Director of Human Resources beginning June 30th, 2021, approve the elimination of the position of the Director of Finance beginning June 30th, 2021, and subsequently approve the position of Accounting Coordinator beginning July 1, 2021, and approve the position of HR Coordinator position beginning July 1, 2021, and approve the Director of Business Services beginning July 1, 2021.
Thank you, John, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second by Brett. This time we can have discussion. Any questions on this motion or topic? Go ahead, Nubs, sorry for the.
I just, where are our 98,000 potential savings?
Do I join the $98,000 number in the reallocation, is the word that was used in the topic summary? Can you explain? Yes. With the elimination of the Director of Finance and the elimination of the Director of Technology being replaced by a Accounting Coordinator and a Human Resources Coordinator, both of those positions are not administrative positions, those are estimated to be approximately $55,000 apiece right now, and so they're not administrators, may come to us at a much more reduced rate. They're still overseen by existing administrators, but they're not administrative roles. Thank you, Nubs, do we have any additional questions on this motion or topic? Do we have a word, I'm trying to log back on. If you could assist with that, please? Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Any additional questions or discussion on this motion?
Maria, has she been involved in all of the discussion? Has she been offline?
Maria, did you hear the motion made by John and seconded by Brett in regards to the topic with the organizational chart for 2021-2022?
I'm sorry, no, I got removed from the meeting, but I got it now.
Kendra, can you repeat the motion for the good of the order?
Motion by Smith to align the proposed 2021-2022 organizational chart to approve the elimination of the Director of Human Resources beginning June 30th, 2021, approve the elimination of the Director of Finance beginning June 30th, 2021, and subsequently approve the position of Accounting Coordinator beginning July 1, 2021, approve the position of HR Coordinator position beginning July 1, 2021, and approve the position of Director of Business Services beginning July 1, 2021. Thank you, Tammy.
With that being repeated, Maria, do you have any questions or discussion that come to your mind?
No, sir.
Linda, go ahead with your question.
Yeah, so with the eliminating of the Director of Human Resources and Director of Finances, we're now switching to the Human Resource Coordinator position. Now, are we going out for applications for that? Are there going to be new hires? I guess, how is that job being fulfilled?
Technically, what I'm looking at is we're taking the Director of Finance and the Director of Human Resources positions and eliminating those and creating the Director of Business Services, and the rest of that will be talked about in closed sessions since we're talking about personnel.
So I guess I asked about the HR Coordinator position?
The HR Coordinator position, yes, we're going to go, yes, for the HR Coordinator position and the Accounting Coordinator positions will both be posted, yes.
And then the Director of Business Services, we're going to be discussing it in closed session because that's probably already been vetted out, I'm assuming?
Because that is discussing personnel.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Linda. Any additional questions on this motion or topic?
Separately or all together in one package?
All in one package, this is one motion made by Mr. Smith, seconded by Brett, all together.
Okay.
Good question, thank you. Seeing no other hands or anybody else asking questions, at this time we will call the motion for a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the Cola Supplemental Funds Grant with an attached topic summary sheet from Jill Seaman. The recommended motion, do we have a motion? The recommended motion, do we have a motion this evening? Kendra?
I recommend a motion to approve the 2021-22 Head Start Federal COLA Supplement.
Motion by Kendra, do we have a second?
Aye.
Second by Maria. Any discussion or questions on that motion or topic this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the old volume 30, number one, policy update for our first reading. In front of us, policy 0144.5, Board Member Behavior Code of Conduct as a new policy. Adoption is recommended but not required, the policy committee does have a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Ron?
Motion to approve policy 0144.5, Board Member Behavior Code of Conduct as a first reading.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second? Second by Brett. Any discussion on this motion or topic? Ron, go ahead.
Our decision is what Dr. Sample talked about in the new board member orientation working together with this, so that kind of ties together with all of this.
All right, thank you, Ron. Any additional questions or discussion on this motion or topic? John?
One of the reasons why the policy committee, from my recollection, brought it here as a first reading is because it is a bylaw. And so it's more appropriate that the board get a chance to review it in its entirety rather than take a recommendation from the committee. Most of the bylaw modifications we make are pretty mundane or technical if we approve them in the committee level. So, the first reading allows the opportunity to read it, and then it'll require the second reading next month. And obviously, the bylaw speaks for itself, but it gives the board president some authorities that they didn't have in the past. And recreates, it creates some of the expectations that we typically place into board goals into an actual bylaw with possible consequences if necessary. So, I encourage everyone to read it, and then we'll see it again next month.
Thank you, John. With that being said, we had a motion for the first reading, really that's just discussion this evening. Correct, Tammy? As I said, being a first reading, this is really for discussion and for a vote, so please save our motion for now, for now. For the reason, we will still have that motion as the first reading, okay? So, do we have any additional questions on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. We also had, or have, policy 0145, sexual and other forms of harassment. Would the recommend a motion to the policy committee? Do we have a motion on that this evening? John?
I recommend a motion to approve policy 0145, sexual harassment, sexual and other forms of harassment as a first reading.
Motion by John, do we have a second? We have a second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions on this topic promotion? John, go ahead.
I'd just like to point out again that because of its numbering, it's a bylaw, and it relates to the board activity, and that's specifically, we have other forms of policies that address sexual harassment, that this one being bylaw or if it's related to the board. So, that's again, is why it comes to us as a first reading, so that it can be reviewed and then challenged once again next month.
Thank you, John, any additional questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the technical corrections to policies 8330.01, 8680, and 9151. Per bylaws 0131.1, the superintendent is authorized to review and make technical corrections to policies that have already been adopted through formal rulemaking procedures. The superintendent informs the board of any such changes at our next regular board meeting, such as this evening. Policies 8330.01 and 8680 were reviewed at the February 3rd, Finance HR Committee and Board of Education being changed to a reboard to be formatted the same as other policies. Policy 9151 was reviewed at the March 3rd, 2021 Facilities Committee meeting, and Board of Education will be changed to board to be formatted the same as other policies. This is information only based on that bylaw and a technical corrections by Dr. Sample. Next item on our agenda is the building configuration timeline update. We have a talk, summary sheet from Dr. Sample, and I will, while he's been updating us at the committee level, I think it's appropriate for just a quick review at this time, so I will give it forward to Dr. Sample.
Thanks, Heather. The, I will continue to add to this report, and any new additions will be involved. Please understand, too, that this was as of last week, so I will fill in any updates since the agenda was posted and the report was written. Anything that's happened since then. So, Eddie and the respective building principals, I met with the six teachers whose positions are being reduced for economic reasons, and I will have more information, specific information regarding that in closed session. I'm also pleased to report that the number of teacher positions to be eliminated for economic reasons has decreased from nine to six positions. By statute, Athens, as the receiving district of Maple Grove, must make efforts to retain the staff, considering the number of employees expressing interest in remaining in Maple Grove and the conversations that Eddie and I both have been having with their HR person as well as Jeff Aston. Pleased to report that they met on Monday, as Athens School District, at the Athens School Board, they met on Monday, and they approved the positions to be able to offer contracts to the Maple Grove teachers, at least four of the five teachers and one administrative assistant. And so, that's why we got, that's why we were able to reduce our positions that we were eliminating because of Maple Grove. They do not have contract in hand, in fact, Eddie and I were rather insisted that they do not resign from their positions as MAX employees until they do have contracts in hand. We're expecting that that will take place this week. Then once the staff members have all been aligned, the building and room assignments will happen. A large portion of that took place in yesterday's halt meeting. So, that's a critical step for buildings. The grounds begin planning movement, as well as some other updates that we're going to be looking at very shortly as we proceed down the Maple Grove timeline with the three parcels of building and the contents and the assets and liabilities. So, I anticipate that we're going to see a lot more movement here in the next month, especially in the next two months.
And that's it. Thank you, Dr. Sample. Any questions for Dr. Sample on this agenda item? Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Not a question, but just a point of interest in that there's a lot of financial factors that are developing because of the decisions that are being made and the shifts that are taking place. And in the past, Finance Committee, it was determined that these are also overlapping with our regular budget planning. And so, rather than instruct Finance to try to shore up a new projection and a new budget, that it would kind of all develop as our fiscal budget typically develops, and then it would be all built in there. So, we were looking at April and May to get new budget forecasts, rather than just reacting to our decision, making a budget forecast specific for that decision. So, I just want to bring the board up to speed of, you know, why we don't have the, you know, budget minus Maple Grove decision budget minus the buildings. We're kind of, it's all happening at the exact same time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any additional board members have questions or discussion on this agenda item this evening? All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Before I ask for a motion, I'll ask if anyone would like anything pulled from our consent agenda this evening? Bobbs?
February 16th, we have state...
All right, we will, if I record at the end, I will ask you then if, hearing that no one wants anything pulled from the consent agenda, does someone have a motion this evening? Brett, go ahead.
A motion to approve consent at agenda items A through D, which includes minutes of the February 16th, 2021, February 17th, 2021, February 25th, 2021 meetings, second readings and approval of policy 1211, whistleblower protection, bylaw 0100, definitions, bylaw 0131.1, bylaws of policy, bylaw 0144.4, identification, policy 2411, school counseling and academic and career planning, policy 2416, student privacy and parental access to information, policy 3220, staff evaluation and educator effectiveness, policy 5113, open enrollment program in the district, policy 5511, dressing grooming, policy 5517.01, bullying, policy 5540, the schools and governmental agencies, policy 5540.01, investigations involving suspected child abuse, policy 7230, gifts, grants and requests, policy 8405, environmental health and safety program, and deletion of policy 2416.01, parental, like police access to instructional material, center and information, claims, vouchers and receipts totaling $2,416,914.50, the personnel report as presented, and donations totaling $898.93.
We have a motion by Brett, do we have a second? Second by Ron. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Nubs says, mentioned earlier, staying from the February 16th meeting minutes. Motion carries. Items for future meetings, just a quick preview of that. If that is for a committee meeting, you can email or contact your chair people of each committee or Dr. Sample and directors that you are working with for that committee. If it is items for a future, specific board, a whole or board meeting, please contact myself or Dr. Sample. I have not heard of anything in addition currently. We have a lot of things that we are working on in upcoming committee meetings, but is there anything anyone would like to add for the good of the order right now? Hearing nothing, at this time I would just remind everyone of our schedule tomorrow, Thursday, March 18th, at approximately 8:15 a.m. on Blue Jay 730 radio station. Dr. Sample and myself will review tonight's meeting. In future meetings, we have a school forest advisory meeting on Monday, March 22nd at 4:00 p.m. at the school forest, which is virtual academy governance board meeting will be Thursday, March 25th at 12:45 p.m., which will be conducted virtually. Finance HR committee meeting will be Wednesday, April 7th at 4:30 p.m. in the boardroom. There will be a board of canvassers meeting Monday, April 12th at 2:00 p.m. in the boardroom. Maple Grove Governance Board meeting will be on Monday, April 12th at 6:00 p.m. at Maple Grove Charter School. The Head Start Policy Council will next meet on Tuesday, April 13th at 5:30 p.m. virtually. Our next CTP, our Curriculum Technology People Services meeting will be held Wednesday, April 14th at 4:30 p.m. in the boardroom. Which is virtual academy governance board meeting also, they will have an additional one in April on the 15th at 12:45 p.m., conducted virtually. Our next regular Board of Education meeting will be hosted here on the high school auditorium on Wednesday, April 21st, and virtually, beginning at approximately 5:30 p.m. Next, we have a contemplate motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section 19.85, current one, perency, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, current E deliberating or negotiation of the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons required a closed session. Current F, considering financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or investigation charges against specific persons, except where current B applies, which have discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to and such histories or data are involved in such problems or investigations. Current G, conferring with legal counsel for a governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, which it is or is likely to become involved, and 118.125, for the purpose of considering student early college credit and start now applications that may involve discussions of confidential student records and to discuss other matters involving student records and personal histories that, if discussed in public, would likely have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation or reputations of the persons discussed. Purpose of the closed session is for, one, the consideration of a possible action regarding applications for participation in the early college credit and start college now programs. Two, to consider and act upon parental requests for student auto-study assessments, including the potential for a closed session to review the specifics applicable to the affected students. If the discussion of such an open session would be likely to have an adverse effect upon the reputation of such students pursuant to section 19.85, current one, per N F of Wisconsin statutes. Any such closed session should be immediately followed by repeating an open session for further consideration and ultimately action upon the parental requests. Three, for discussion, consideration and action as appropriate regarding specific teacher resignations and or issuance of a preliminary notice of consideration upon renewal for the purpose of staff reduction to specific teachers. Number four, consideration of potential transfer of internal personnel to the newly created director of business services position. And five, section 19.85, current one, per N G of Wisconsin statutes concerning strategy to be adopted by the board with respect to litigation which is involved with Maple Grove Governance Board in section 19.85, current one, per N E of Wisconsin statutes to conduct specified business, public business, which for competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session to the division of our sale of assets and the division of liabilities between Merrill Area Common Public School District and Athens School District, which may occur as a result of granting petitions for detachment of property in the town of Hamburg, and to take action regarding the... Hamburg and to take action regarding the same. Board will recombate an open session and may take action upon the matters discussed during the closed session portion of the meeting. We have that motion this evening. Motion by John Smith, the second, second by Ron Liberty. Do we have a roll call for that, please, Tammy?
Nubs Ashworth.
Aye.
John Hutterby.
Aye.
Kendra Austin.
Aye.
Jeremy Brown.
John Smith.
Aye.
Maria Wolf.
Aye.
Brock Waller.
Aye.
Lindsay Bigley.
I'm Kevin Blake.
So at this time, it's 58 p.m. and we will adjourn for this timer, open session, and we will recombate in closed session. For those attending virtually that are invited, please log out of open session and join us accordingly. Thank you.